Good morning. Today is Monday, July 13th. It's 10:00 a.m. and we will begin the special meeting to discuss township policies and practices concerning requirements for emergency access provisions in residential subdivisions located within Beaver Creek Township.
Thank you, Board. This is an issue that staff has been working on and we have really two issues we need to discuss, one more of an immediate issue and two, an overall policy in regards to what direction we would like to go with emergency access to the subdivisions within the community and allow emergency access, secondary accesses as well. Before you today and a hard copy in front of you is a list of all the known emergency accesses within the jurisdiction and they're labeled there. I'll let Mr. Amrion take over the meeting at this point to discuss the history and the immediate needs. We do have a map of the platte that we'll be talking about in regards to immediate needs so that we can provide direction on the 16th Beaver Creek Regional Planning and what direction the township would like to go. One more thing, I'm sorry, and then Mr. Ken McMonack is here from Beaver Creek Regional Planning. He can also offer some insight of what other communities are doing as well in regards to emergency access. Sorry, Ed.
As well as some history, some local history as well. This is, the reason for requesting this special meeting now is that we have another section of Bexley River West coming up for review at the county level. And before we go into those meetings on, which begin with a staff review meeting on the 16th, which is Thursday, right? We wanted to make sure that representatives of the township enter that meeting with a unified point of view as to both what we're going to require of the developer of Bexley for the new section and then we realized as we got deeper into those discussions with each other that we really need a policy statement and so we started looking bigger picture. So those are the two points that Mr. Sahari was referring to. In front of you, you have a history of what's happened with regard to emergency access, this timeline here. To put it in its simplest forms, right now, there is none. Although it was present on site plans that were approved by both the zoning commission and the trustees for a number of different reasons, the emergency access points either never were installed or once installed became compromised and unusable. So we're wondering now, okay, how, what kind of a stance do we want to take with regard to emergency access points, a secondary access point in this new section as the developer prepares to put in a new section for Bexley, Beaver Creek?
The chief has drawn the two access points that were discussed earlier that now either has a house on it or is obstructed either through DPNL's infrastructure being in place. The house where the easement is, the overhang from the house is actually into the easement. The foundation is within the restriction, but the overhang of the actual structure is in the easement. And quite frankly, there was no way we'd be able to get a fire engine through that easement or the secondary easement that was approved later on, which is the DPNL, where the DPNL infrastructure is.
Right. So the initial easement route was obstructed, a second, a second one was agreed to and as far as the record indicates, that second go-around at establishing an emergency access easement to the subdivision is still in effect legally. So we've talked about how to be helpful to the developer suggesting alternatives. We haven't yet had those conversations with him, but we have sent an initial message to him that it's going to be an issue. We will be discussing it when it gets to the county level, but we want to make sure that we, first of all, as I said, that we're all saying the same thing, all of us from the township, and that we have support from the trustees, both in terms of how to approach this approval process and in terms of policy. So you could go at it from either direction.
I have a couple of questions. How that matches the map we have, the map up in front of us.
The blue lines are roadways that now exist. It's, the blue lines represent Section 3A of Bexley.
That Danbury Place, Trafalgar Place, is that what you have out in line there?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, so this is...
And cul-de-sac in the back.
Yeah, this is Danbury, this is Trafalgar. I can't remember, what's this one called?
They don't have a name on the map here, so I don't know what it is.
Boy, I don't remember what it is.
Going into the cone. Okay, I just...
And then this is Mount Zion Church is where it's all set.
And those are actually streets.
Correct. Everything that's...
Hyde Park Place is the name of the one with the cul-de-sac.
And so where is, where was the emergency access supposed to come in through that red line there and then come in between those two houses?
The original was this lower red line and it hooked up in, along the lot lines here. And that was the one that was obstructed by DPNL. And then they reconfigured it so that it turned and then came up on the other side of that same corner lot. And this is the one that was obstructed by the overhang and now by a fence and a tree of this house.
Okay. But Ed and Chief, is the purpose of this meeting for us to decide how the best to design this entrance or is it, are we determining a formal policy that we're going to, and then delegate that to?
Staff believes that one, that they're, that they're interwoven, that one proceeds from the other. And if we make a decision here in this meeting, for example, about how to approach the county approval process with regard to this subdivision, it has implications for what our policies are and we might as well articulate those now so that we can be consistent moving forward. We don't want to be accused by one developer of having favored another by not requiring or...
It will also indicate any, our stance on any emergency access being considered and also the maintenance thereof.
And that's correct.
And that's not only, that would be wherever the fire apparatus has to be able to access.
Right. And the larger, and the larger issue is, one, inspections of it and, two, who maintains them. You know, some of them are concrete, some of them are bike paths that are reinforced in regard to allow emergency equipment to go on them. Others are ground reinforced with grass on top. And the question is, not only for the township, but would be a question later on, depending on the direction we go here, is a question in the city, who is responsible for maintaining those? Some have homeowners associations, most do not, that are in existence in some of the city neighborhoods. So, so it's, we have an immediate need in regards to getting some direction for this neighborhood, but then the overall is what direction we go on with the rest of the community and how we enforce it. Obviously, some of the discussions with reviewing the Ohio Fire Code and then as well as the Southwest Ohio Code that was adopted not only by the city, but by the township trustees, it looks like the inspections of it was going to be the responsibility of the fire department. Now, the maintenance of it, that's the larger and unknown question, who's going to be responsible for maintaining it?
But what's not in question is that we have the authority to require the secondary access points.
A couple of questions and I guess number one is on the, the access point that is obstructed by DPNL, either underground or overgr, is it underground or is it...
It's a pedestal.
Okay. So how were they not in the loop that there was an emergency access right there? Is there a disconnect between the township, the county and utilities or is it...
I don't know.
How did they not know that?
It was before my time. I don't know whether they were working with complete...
I, I, once again, I don't know. It showed up and that's when...
And maybe it was in before it was, who knows?
Yeah, and I think with the DPNL, at least the history that I knew of, and of course once it was before my time as well, is that the box, the DPNL pedestal, once it was put in, once it was brought into the attention, that's when the second one was put in place.
Does DPNL have a seat at the table for regional planning?
No.
It might, I'm just...
Not formally, it's a member that's, looks pretty familiar, but no.
But there's no representative there and if they had a future, they would...
Secondary utilities are required to do this.
But they, at the subdivision reviewing these, they are, are...
They are part of it.
And can I ask a question on that issue then? Was, remind me, do we set those up as an easement? This was a question I think we had. Is it actually an easement and maybe if the easement wasn't actually recorded, DPNL wouldn't necessarily be on notice of it, right?
No, it's recorded. It was in the platte and marked an emergency access. Well, it was marked an emergency access and a utility easement. I think that's the problem. Sorry. And then the, I don't think there was any clear cut who super seats who on that and so we're trying new plats that are coming in until, I think, this is the thing we are meeting right here. We're going to set something that hopefully will all work within time. And what I have heard is that when concerns were raised about the pedestal having popped up, the developer was unwilling to force, let's say, DPNL to relocate its pedestal and then that, that led to the necessity for a second access.
Second question, on this area view, the intersection here, what's the plan for that?
None, there's, there's a comment open.
It's green space, okay. So is there anything precluding us from extending our emergency access down in between these two lots coming right up here and then we could actually access everything?
Ownership of the property, that would require that the emergency access to wiggle across the property line into the property of the church and then back across to take a, that's a power line easement, you see that slant line?
Okay.
We're coming here.
Yes. And I, I don't know whether there would be a problem with that, I think not.
One more question, because I don't think you would know better than most probably. This lot is not developed yet, correct?
The one, immediate, yes, that is correct.
So that lot's open?
Yeah.
It would get access?
First...
For us throwing it off?
And that's one of the options we discussed by way of encouraging the developers to come up there and all... Because they're digging on the next one down, right?
Actually, actually, the, 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 now, I believe, yeah.
I think it's the one right there.
There is a 10-foot easement right here under the power lines.
Shepherd or...
Bexley Hill, oh, no, that's Denver. Actually, the easement that comes through here now, there were a couple of lots when this was first discovered, but they, I think it was Ryan Holmes got permits for those and closed them up really quickly. So we weren't able to do that up there.
All but one were already closed off when Ryan got ahold of the vacant parcels and then that last one you see directly above the number 28 was built last year.
Yeah, this was the last one.
That one. So there's a house there now.
The emergency access has to come off Shepherd, is that the goal?
No. It does not have to come off Shepherd, that's just...
Is there any point cutting off Bexley Hills?
Other than coming off Bexley, the, the single point of failure that requires the, the secondary access is this stretch right here.
Which is?
So this is Bexley. So it would have to be on, on this side of this stretch for it to, well, actually from, it can't be from here to here because that's, everything relies on that section of pavement. So we would need something off of potentially Shepherd, potentially shared venture with Mount Zion, a connection into Windermere or there is, just south of here is Upper Bellbrook, which would be another access point in. But it cannot rely on this section of Bexley right here.
Which the developer does own the land to both the east and the south, as well as the north and Windermere.
He owns all of this, to my knowledge.
This quarter, I don't think he owns.
It's a, it's, it is, it's a different...
It's a different name.
Yeah, it's a, it is, yeah. It's a different company. So, you know, if we do, if we're saying interconnectivity in this, it's eventually, I don't know if he has, the developer has plans to connect to Windermere. I mean, it's stubbed, obviously, to the north there, but that would require, if we went emergency access to that point, that would require going over a creek and would obviously cost a little more money to make sure it's, it can hold emergency equipment. The second option is ask the developer to work with Mount Zion to come in off the easement that's already exists on the south side of the parcel that shows the power line easement. That's working with the developer and working with another landowner to, to secure that. The third option is say, well, eventually these two plats are going to connect or we require that eventually these two plats connect, but in the meantime, what do we tell the residents and who has the authority, you know, who has to make the notification to the residents that were recorded on the deed that, you know, that's only one access point? The code clearly allows...
That is our worst one. I mean, I'd be really concerned. We have one that's much, much worse than that.
But the code does require that we can enforce it and require them. So if we, we make them a kind of a modification here, it kind of goes forward with all the future developments as well. The fire department's position is we would, they would still like to see two points of access into the development. One, emergency access and then of course, like you see on the map, they have one entry point for the residential neighborhood off of Shepherd.
But it shouldn't be reliant on waiting until phase five of a project to get that?
I, I agree. And that, and that's the difficult part with this project is that there's been a few errors in regards to the emergency access. And then it puts us in a position to, do we enforce it? And what are our legal obligations at that point of enforcing something that's been in place for quite some time? Or do we work with the developer at the July 16th meeting and say, we need emergency access to the last section? Or not the last section, the next, yeah.
This new, this, and do you have plans where that's possible? Have you indicated the plans where it would be possible to come off? I personally think there needs to be two accesses minimum to every platte and all plats should be interconnected. And I, that's been my stance for 30 years.
And that's what, that's an official stance taken by the American Planning Association and most professional planners will tell you that the correct way to go about these discussions is to begin to discourage the proliferation of cul-de-sacs in favor of connectivity. Now, I know that's a fiery topic among developers and some residents, people love them or hate them, planners hate them, but we've, you know, it hasn't been that long ago that this fire department had a fire that couldn't be controlled as in an ideal situation because the fire department did not have access across a designated emergency access.
That was, I think that's a bike, little tiny bike path up in there.
But that was designed.
It was designed to be emergency access.
It wasn't designed to be developed.
Well, and that's, that's the larger picture.
And that's why we're here, that's part of the point, fences encroach and it doesn't get plowed and not scrubbed down. Let me chip in a little bit, Ed. Harold, you were the chairman of the planning commission and I was the city planner there at Beaver Creek, what we did, I think was about the first one of these that spring in all into the Beaver View development in the back.
I don't have that, so for us, it's wonderful.
Well, we wanted to connect the streets.
Yes.
And we had, you know, it was a big contentious meeting and we came up with the access and at that time it was a gate and a lock. I went there this morning on the way to work. There's a sidewalk and I think there's enough, there was supposed to be enough construction on the bottom to support the fire truck across the two to me. And we're running into that. You know, the trend now is to have these little secluded communities. Sugar Creek Township had a platte that would logically have a street come in and loop around and come back out to little Sugar Creek Road. The, the plan then was to cut off the second access and put a fire access in so everybody could be on a giant cul-de-sac and theoretically no cars would come through and kill their kids in automobile when they're playing basketball over there. This is something I think needs to be addressed and we need to set a tone. We're going to be working on the subdivision regulations later this year for the county. And we'd like, you know, it's possible to put a section in there about dual access and fire emergency and we can put some standards in there, so it's really timely to figure all this out. You know, we're just glad.
The chief has drawn there on the, on the yellow, some possibilities for the phases, the phase of some discussion now.
The options are crazy.
Your yellow line on the south side of the, I think it's the south side, is the Mount, adjacent to Mount Zion.
Right.
And have the access going all the way through the act three. It's almost like a whole road there, it's a major road.
They would essentially have to build a road and then decide whether they're going to maintain it and to pay for a grassed surface.
And how is it getting into Trafalgar?
That's the easement Mr. Perez was pointing to. It's a, there's a 10-foot utility easement overhead lines that we can drive...
It doesn't look like it comes through here.
That line from Shepherd you got.
Right. Okay, but this is just a lot line, this is not, they'd have to have a...
You'd have to create a...
Create an easement between two lots there. One looks like it's bad enough to do that.
Well, there should be an easement already.
Yeah, I'm fairly certain there was an easement directly below.
Well, it isn't shown as I'm...
And they appear we're going to get into the duals.
Right.
Now, Sugar Creek has had agreements with, Sugar Creek Fire is working with DPNL on one of their substation sites near a platte down there. And then they have a little easement through the platte into the street, so it's possible they have worked with townships before on that.
Well, as much as anything, it looks to me like, what you're suggesting there is that a, there should be a street rather than an easement. That should be another street coming in off of Shepherd.
The original design should have been that way, yeah.
Which makes much more sense.
That's a should have would have quit.
Rather than, that's an extremely long easement of which you're going to have to maintain and no one will know it's there, it's underground, but it's not going to be showing unless it's a bike way that shows something that you can get in and out. Otherwise, it's going to be grassed over and I know the one that you're talking about on Green, I think, or Paul.
Yeah, I mean, the, there's a potential to use the first part of the red, that's the original easement and then come across onto the, if, if the landowner and the church allows it and they come in, then the rest is yellow.
But Chief, if he, if realistically, we're assuming that he's going to develop this into another cul-de-sac?
This one right here, I believe is slated to come back out to Shepherd.
Then wouldn't that create a secondary?
No, because we still have things...
Is that in the plan?
Still that single point there.
And it's also all the end, it doesn't fit over here.
Yeah, what would have made sense in the originals to take where the 28 is on the, on the map there and connect that to the other road that's going to be coming off Shepherd eventually, but like, what's going to say?
That horse is gone.
Yeah. It's going to go to what it should have. So I, I think the best option here is actually ask the developer to work with the church and then DPNL to use the south side there and give us access to the 10-foot easement.
Can he make it a street and have houses come? Also, it's not an emergency, it's an access.
Well, eventually, we could tie it into the street, but there's still, there's going to be that yellow section with the current...
The smaller yellow.
Yeah, the smaller yellow, but the red could potentially be a road coming off Shepherd, but we're still going to have to require that yellow section because if we lose that single point of access up towards the north, we still have to get around it somehow. Now, eventually, it may connect with other developments that are planned out there in the future, but...
It's still going to be very long.
This northwest, this northwest lot right here is actually a retention pond, correct? So as far as constructing a road across that?
Yeah, it's, I, I don't know what the fees will be going along, especially the side for... Yes, that's, that's a detention pond, the one on the northwest corner.
Detention or retention, okay.
These, these parcels are selling right now too. I don't know which of them may still be unsold and therefore available for use for emergency access. That's another reason for the urgency of this easement.
Ryan, I believe, controls these two, next to the detention pond in the corner. And Ryan controls all of those.
Well, if we have on there, if there's only one point of access to your platte on the deeds, I think that might reduce the number of houses being sold quickly.
Well, that, that could be one of the, sort of a last, last solution. If there's no other solution that's forthcoming, then we can, let me put it, I've discussed this with the recorder. He said, "The recorder cannot place any statements on the deeds. We record the deeds." Where that happens is at the approval process that effectively says to the developer, "If you want to build this, you're going to put this statement on the deed and that reflects back to the record plan and so on and so forth." For example, the, the recent Zimper development with the abrogation agreement, there will be a statement on the deed that refers to the abrogation language on the record plan. We can't put the easement on the deed itself, but we can refer to it so that, so that there's, so that we rise to the legal standing of being able to say, "You knew or should have known, had you read what you signed about your house, you should have known."
The problem with that is if so many of those lots are already sold, what are you going to do with those deeds?
They won't, they have to put something, I guess, people need to know. I'm not sure they care.
I'm not sure.
You know, I'm not sure that you're concerned about it.
So they don't care until one significant event.
Until it gets blocked off and you can't get in there. Because I've had this discussion with other people on L-CI, if you would. I don't care. I don't want another access into that and L-CI is in the cities. There's emergency access over that. I said, "What if you have heart attack, there's a tree on the street there?" Person I've been, but that's a major concern and I don't think until it happens that they worry about it. But it has been, and I would say, what you said, I think we need to have a street along the bottom where that red line is, that should be part of the platte. Continue it, I guess, with your yellow line to access up into the other platte to provide it and to discourage any further.
Is Sherborn a, a private?
Yes. It's country club, isn't it?
Because your shortest path would come through here.
Right. However, with the detention pond there, I'm not sure there's room. Tim, what do you think? Is there room to put an emergency?
Right here, sorry.
You can come off to the left of that house.
Oh, 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 that way.
Saying on this side of the house?
Yeah.
Instead of coming across from the cul-de-sac, come down here, it's the shortest path. path.
Yeah.
But it's a private road.
Yeah, it's a private road and then he'd have to obviously do the property issues.
That assumes the possibility of an agreement with Country Club or the North.
Well, they have the same issue.
I was going to say, it might be beneficial to them.
They have the same issue.
Right, of course, of course. And that, that's why it's a policy discussion as well as what do we do for this immediate situation. I, I think maybe the best approach to take here is to make it clear to the developer and his designer, his engineer on Thursday that we will be requiring a secondary access point to these plaques and not tell him how to do it. I, I think the role of government and inspectors ideally is to lay out the specs, but we're not in the business of dictating methods and materials. You come back to us with a proposal. You do the work and we'll say yay or nay, but you do the work. We're going to require this access, period. And, and keep it simple and straightforward and firm and unyielding and, and the county approval process goes nowhere unless we do have those, that consideration. No emergency access, whatever is represented on the, on the record plan that was submitted for 3B, which is the green space, oh, to the north there.
Yeah, not even the existing access.
That's, that's the, that's the section that we'll be considering on Thursday for the first time, so. I, I, I don't, that's just one idea that we can, we can work with informally with some of his suggestions, but I think as a, as an official statement of what we want, I think we should simply stop and say, "We, we are going to require this. You tell us how you're going to do it."
And we can also require, yeah, the standards that have been approved.
Sure. I mean, yeah, did that?
There's actually.
That color one is not approved. That's one that we'll be coming back at some point for addition. So, that is new language that the UFC has created since the township adopted it.
Is that what we want?
I believe so. I think that was Randy's recommendation. He wasn't able to be here today because he drew on the lottery this morning, so, for our drug-free workplace policy. The, but my, his recommendation is, yes, at some point we need to adopt that. The one in your right hand is the Ohio Fire Code and that's, that is actively in place right now, so we can use any of that.
There are standards yet, I know.
Do we have that in our policy? That they have to follow those? The approved standards in the Ohio by administrative code, whatever.
Well, it's not an additional policy. It is just a guidance and it's already law, so it, it allows us at the, their stage.
I think we should refer to it saying, "These are what we will require."
Yeah, I don't think there's an additional policy. What we refer and, and quite frankly, through the zoning process, when it goes through the zoning commission, we, we look at things like that and, and refer, if there's any questions, back to the code.
In the subdivision process, we confirm the township and then tell us what specifications they want in the construction laws.
We agree. It would be my proposal that we have the policy stating that we do need two accesses to every plaque as required by the, suggested by the fire department for emergency access and the standards as set forth on the state level, however you want to discuss that terminology.
Is that sufficient or do we need to also put a caveat in there that from phase one or from phase two on? Because if you just.
How early on the development occurs.
What Ms. Rapp just described, I could come back and I could put it in my fifth phase, but up until, up until.
No, I'm saying, if, this will be our policy from here, right here on.
So, if.
I'm trying to get.
I would hope they would want it before the.
Phrase.
So, from on, so it's from phase one forward.
Yes, sir.
That's what I'm just trying to make sure.
We should show the multiple.
Is there anything else you'd like to add to that so we know?
No, and then leave, like, as I mentioned, leave this, leave the design and the construction out to the developer.
To ensure that these take place.
But you have to have a, you have to have a stopgap to prevent, well, and then number two, how we prevent the DPL issue coming on top of the road.
Require separate easements.
Well, you have separate easements.
And the road is under, and your house is under utility.
So that that doesn't happen again.
You're talking about the new part of the old?
No, I'm saying from, we, we put.
Yeah, we're alert to making sure the language specifies who's super C2.
Do you know what I'm saying? Because we, we, we put this in place, we, and he puts a road in through here and then DPL comes back five years later and puts another. How do we prevent that? Because we're going into a, into a utility easement.
I think you do that with what's currently in place, or kind of like what I do now is, you're out there every day and if you know that access is supposed to be there and you see something happen, you'll, you start making phone calls, which is kind of what we do now.
Is there any demarcation of these things or they, or they, I know they tend to, the grass creeps because the residents.
Very. Some of them are more evident than others.
I think that's the second.
We have a big bag, if you look throughout the city and the township. So, we have 38 to 40 of these that we know of and we have everything from completely obstructed, unmarked, you wouldn't know it was there unless you knew it was there, to actually a few that are fairly well-maintained, identified, secured. And so we've got the gambit, which again, that's one of my bigger concerns is, we can solve this problem probably pretty easily, but that doesn't help me with all of the ones that I have to clean up and maintain longer term. And obviously I'll be working with another governmental body to accomplish the vast majority of those, quite frankly, so.
And there's only a small handful in the township now?
Looks like there's only two.
Two that I know of.
Six or seven in the township?
The other person you have.
Only two in here.
On this map. There's a couple more.
As I said, there's been others that have been approved.
Oh, okay.
They haven't made on the map.
Okay, they have them in the development. So, are we going to have standards for, for how they are to be maintained?
Yeah, the Ohio Fire Code covers really all of that and if we adopt unified, we'll get a little bit of additional clarification in language. So, the, the how we ma, how it should be maintained, how it should be marked, turning radiuses, grade, all of that is addressed. Gates, barricades, signage, all, that's all addressed. And we have a fairly clear path based off of legal's opinion on, on how it has been adopted for maintaining it. So, there is, we have the ability, for example, to cite, and it's a minor misdemeanor, is that correct?
Yeah.
The way it's, it's written now. So, we can go about that fairly easily, again, in the township. We can go into the incorporated township, the city, and do some of that, but again, the, because the Ohio Fire Code covers city and township. It's been adopted in the city and the township, unified has. So, we have equal authority, but with a different, again, governmental body, we may not have the same level of support or clear vision as to how to address the issue. So, that's probably the bigger problem is that.
Is there anything that you as a department responded and say, "If these accesses do not come up to those standards, they will not be rec, not used or recognized as such"?
Actually, I think that's probably the wisest direction we're going to have to go is identify, and we're, we're in the process of doing an inventory, not only of the locations, but of the condition, the accessibility, the markets and all of that, to see what, what's usable, what's not. There's a few that are probably completely unfeasible at this point to try and even reclaim without major property owner issues and things like that. So, I think that is probably what we're going to have to do is say, "Okay, unless everybody agrees to bring X to standard, we're going to write this off and, and say that we're not going to lie on it or we're not even going to acknowledge its existence, but then we want hold harmless." And that's a legal thing we have to do.
And notify those individuals who are affected by those areas, including, I'll work with the cities to say that this is what's going to take place because they don't want their people not being protected either.
Right. Well, and, you know, the classic, probably the best example of this is at the end of Mill Run, which is, first road south of Pebble Creek. There was a cul-de-sac on the east side. And then Fairfield, there's a, a small connector between them that now has a fence, a hill and trees across it. So, it is completely inaccessible right now. So, unless the property owners agree to change the landscaping, move the fence and everything else, there is absolutely no way we can use it. That, that one property owner has affected the emergency access, probably doesn't even know it's there, quite frankly. I don't think they did it intentionally, but it affects everybody on that dead-end section of Mill Run. So, at what point do, do we address all of those people? Let them all know that, "Hey, this is an issue" or do we just say, "We're not going to use it. We're not going to recognize it. We're going, again, pretend it doesn't exist?" Matter of fact, the, interestingly enough, they're doing all the curb work, or the, the curb and gutter work up there. I was curious to see if that's one of the sections they're going to go in because there's depressed curb and if they're going to put in a standard three-inch, you know, whatever the standard curb is in place of the, the depressed.
Roll, the roll back to the end.
Yeah. So, that's, that's probably our worst-case scenario in all of this, as far as existing.
My suggestion would be that if any of those are declared unusable, then we have notices to hand out to the residents who are affected, saying, "There is, this has been abandoned," if you would, "as an emergency access."
Are those old ones, were there easements back then?
I have no idea. We have not gotten.
If those easements are recorded, then they're in a position where they ought to know.
Right.
Whether they do know or not.
Or whether they may.
The previous owner may have built the fence. Previous owner may have built the mound. But if it's a recorded easement, then unfortunate, unfortunate, they're in a position where they ought to know.
And we're, we're to the point now.
And who will be in favor of it?
Yeah. We're to the point now where depending on the guidance we got from the board today, we're going to go in and do a lot of additional work to try and determine those, because that's going to be a lot of digging through old records, finding the plans, finding what's recorded and what is, just don't mention to whom.
You have to figure out what's underneath. Another one I'm guarding view and it's grass over it. Supposedly there's a road underneath that.
Correct.
If you remember this case. Can you go in with a, some sort of a tester as you go with the grave to see what's, if there's anything underneath there? And how to eat the grass, my thing.
You can go in and do, you know, soil sampling.
Yeah, of course.
To see if actually that's viable to get into Edith Marine, which is a very, 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 very long cul-de-sac. And I don't think those people, I thought they didn't care. They didn't want it open to.
You just want to know the product. You're not going to do compaction tests and things like that?
No.
Because if it's put in.
It's there.
It, it should have been put in and probably at the time, hopefully inspected by whatever government agency, whether city, township.
That particular one, I believe, was a street and then they didn't want it to street, so then they probably got.
Yeah, so it should have been built to the standards as required at the time. So, and if it was for emergency access, it should be able to hold a fire truck. A ladder truck, I don't know, but fire truck, it should be able.
It won't stop.
Yeah.
So, it sounds like you have, you have the consensus, at least from the board. So, what actions do you need from us on this today? Are you going to, are you going to draft something with it? Do you have a motion?
Yeah, we'll just have to draft it, I think.
And so, do you need that before your meeting? Do you need that today?
Well, I think you know what the sense is, at least with the meeting on Thursday, that we want two accesses, but.
I feel prepared. I, I think in preparation for Thursday's meeting, the comments that regional planning gets from each of us who, who sends comments should all say the same thing about, whatever else we comment on from our own individual perspectives, we all, we should all comment on this one and say, yeah.
And in this specific case, we have, what would the developer push back on? Obviously the cost of doing this. So, the answer is you can either make the one that has the DPL obstruction on it work, or you can fix the, the encroachment on the easement, or you can create the third.
The DPL easement one was vacated to make the.
The other one.
To make the second one. So, that first one that was put in is, was vacated.
Okay, but no longer exists.
Now, the house easement.
The only one that's in now is.
Now, you've got to either fix the house, you either have to fix the house or create or build a second road, whichever is less expensive. So, that will be the pushback.
Yeah.
Because they already agreed to the emergency access. Now, it's just you've made it unusable.
Well, let me say this too, in regards to the unified fire code that's been adopted by both communities, there is an appeals process as well. And the township has, although not active, has a Fire Code Board of Appeals. And they've had cases in the past. The last one, going back ways, when Chief Eunix was here, where a developer came in and asked for a variance from the code, much like you would with the BCA process, Board of Zoning Appeals process, you'd go in and ask for a variance for that. Now, it was denied in that case because it's a public safety and it was, in that case was, as I recall, Dave, you might want to call me out on this, I think that was a gallons per minute to the hydrants in a dead end.
I don't know if it's that far back.
Yeah. So, of course, so there is an appeals process. There's also an appeals process to the Ohio Fire Code as well, but that would be conducted at.
But those are free, those are free construction, appeals process.
Right, those are free. Not, not like after this. This is more of an enforcement.
In, in that case, it's also incumbent on us then to make sure that, that the applicants are aware of that appeals process in writing at the time of the decision, so.
And as far as notification to the residents, there's a bit of CYA on that, but then there's also, how does that impact their homeowners insurance? Does it change the classification?
It likely does not affect anything for insurance. It's really more of a tactical issue if we were to have an incident there.
And my street's.
So, there's an awareness. It's just literally an awareness. We need to make them aware of, of what they're living in, whether they do it or not when they walk there.
And actually, that, for full disclosure, that's my neighborhood and I bought there knowing what it was and wasn't there, so it's, but we're about to have our first homeowners association meeting and this is one of the topics that is going to come up as far as been asked to me informally.
Is that turned over to a resident board?
Not yet, but that transition is looming and with all the new construction going on, there's been some concerns about how some of the new construction is being handled and some rules that are supposed to be in place.
Dave, do you know whether sections 3A and 3B will be folded into the existing homeowners association or established their own?
I have no idea. I have no idea.
It would be wise rather to have a multiplicity of groups.
Well, he's going to jump across the road on the other side of Shepherd's road.
It's all part of River West.
Yeah, this is all.
Scarborough.
I'm not sure the west side of life much to do with that.
Yeah.
Probably just the, the old back slate will be a home on the city.
Yeah, the original site plan approval or PUD approval was on both sides of the road.
All right, well, they may have a consensus from us.
Anything else?
Thank you, board.
Thanks for your time. It meant very much.
We appreciate it, Joe.
Yes, most welcome.
Good job.
A second.
Yes.
Yes.
Other access.
Thank you.
Thanks.